Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for our Mental Health Colorado Candidate Forum. I'm Vincent Attity, President and CEO of Mental Health Colorado. We are so proud to serve as your voice for healthier minds across the lifespan. We're the state's leading advocate in promoting mental wellness, ending shame and discrimination, and ensuring equitable access to mental health and substance use care. As a nonpartisan organization, Mental Health Colorado doesn't endorse candidates, but we are very interested in educating candidates from all parties, and we want all Colorado voters to be confident that anyone they are voting for will be leading us in the right direction when it comes to our mental health. The mental health needs of Coloradans are dire. Our state consistently ranks in the bottom third of the nation in terms of the magnitude of our health needs and the difficulties we too often face in accessing quality care. More than half of the Coloradans who need care never get it. We have one of the highest suicide rates in the country. Through our misuse of alcohol and other drugs, we harm ourselves, our families, and each other. And we too often rely on law enforcement to respond to mental health crises, leading to criminalization, injuries, and death. Jails and prisons are our largest mental health facilities. We need elected officials who are going to prioritize healthier minds across the lifespan, and that's why we're here today. Today, we are meeting some candidates for District Attorney and State Board of Education. We received much interest in this forum, and we weren't able to include every candidate. If your candidate isn't here, but you'd like to see your candidate's statement regarding mental health, you can visit mentalhealthcolorado.org. On our homepage is a section for candidate mental health platforms, as well as recordings of this and previous forums that we've held for candidates for state representative and state senate. I'd like to thank the candidates who are here with us today. As a reminder, this is not a debate. We're not pitting opposing candidates against one another. Instead, we're hoping to host a conversation and create an opportunity to educate voters about mental health issues in the state and the important role that district attorneys, Board of Education members, and other elected officials can play to support our mental health. Before we introduce the candidates, I want to let all our viewers know that there will be time for questions at the end of the forum. If you have a question and you're watching on Facebook, you can leave a comment. And if you're joining the webinar by Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A function at the bottom of your screen. I'm going to start, I'm just going to go around the way I see you on my screen and ask you to just briefly introduce yourself, the office that you're seeking, the geographical area of the state that that represents, and just a sentence or so about mental health. Well, everybody will have more opportunity to share their thoughts as we go on. These are just introductions. And I'm going to start with the gentleman I see on the right side of my screen here, Matthew Durkin. Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vincent, and thank you to all of you for hosting such an important discussion, and thank you for all those tuning in. My name is Matthew Durkin, and I'm running to be the next District Attorney in the First Judicial District, which is Jefferson and Gilpin Counties. And this is such a critical topic. It's such a critical issue, as we just heard. Mental health is a crisis in Colorado, and certainly it washes into court on a daily basis. So I look forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Amy Patton.
Vincent, thank you so much for having this important discussion. So I'm Amy Patton. I'm running to be the District Attorney for the 18th Judicial District. It's all of Arapahoe, Douglas, Lincoln, and Albert Counties, all of those four counties, biggest judicial district in the state. And I have both a personal and professional interest in this topic. You know, my grandfather, my maternal side, I never knew him because he was mentally ill, and he was institutionalized. And that's always been something that I've been really concerned about. But professionally, you have hands-on experience in making sure, for example, that inmates at our supermax prison were provided with mental health services. And I really reform the way that those services were provided in that setting and look forward to our discussion here today.
Thank you for joining us. Brian Mason.
Thank you, Vincent, and thank you so much to everyone for engaging in this important discussion. My name is Brian Mason. I'm running for District Attorney in Colorado's 17th Judicial District, which is all of Adams County and Brumfield Counties. And mental health is a topic that's really important to me, both personally and professionally, for lots of reasons. It certainly has a dramatic impact on our criminal justice system, but it also has an impact on those of us who work in the criminal justice system. And that's why this is an issue that I really care about, and I'm glad we get to talk about today.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us. Beth McCann.
Good afternoon. Again, thank you, Vincent, for sponsoring this interesting discussion. And thanks to those who are listening in. I'm Beth McCann. I'm running for district reelection as the District Attorney in Denver. So that's just the city and county of Denver. I only have one county. And I identified mental health as one of my interests, primary interests, after I was elected the first time. So I have a mental health advisory council that meets monthly, and Vincent has been a part of that. I do think it is a very important topic for the criminal justice system and for criminal justice reform. I don't think we do a good job with people who have mental health issues, and we tend to not know how to deal with them and not deal with them very well in the criminal justice system. So I look forward to the discussion. Thanks.
Thanks for joining us. Alexis King.
Thank you for having me. I'm coming live from my dentist's office parking lot. So thank you, Zoom, for providing this is still an opportunity to be with you today. My name is Alexis King. I'm the Democrat running for District Attorney in Jefferson and Gilpin Counties. I served as a prosecutor in the community for 10 years and spent five years really dedicated to youth issues and working in our juvenile mental health court. As a magistrate judge then in Denver, I worked to reduce the incarceration of people dealing with issues around poverty and mental health in the jail system and strongly believe that we need to make sure that we're protecting folks who are facing mental health issues in our community as they are vulnerable. But we also need to make sure we're not criminalizing mental health in the community. Thanks for having me today.
Thanks for joining us. Zoom is amazing when it works.
When it works.
And then our next two candidates are candidates for State Board of Education, Carla Esser.
Thank you, Vincent, and Mental Health Colorado. I'm running for the State Board of Education in CD7, which is most of Jefferson County and a part of Adams County. I've been a principal, an assistant superintendent, a teacher, a professor at Regis University and teacher prep. Colorado has one of the highest growth in teen suicide in the nation. That's one of my top priorities, to see mental health come into our schools more than it has in the past, and that is a really hard issue to tackle with lack of funding. So thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Lisa Scarsaga.
You had it right the first time. So thank you, Mental Health, for having us, Mental Health Colorado, and everybody watching. My name is Lisa Scarsaga, running for State Board of Ed, Congressional District 1. That includes, and I usually do it by school districts, Denver Public Schools, Inglewood, Sheridan Schools, and then about 18 schools in the Jefferson County area, around the Columbine High School area. I'm just finishing up, just finished my 36th year in education. And I am a former mental health worker. About the first third of my career, I was a psychologist working in the schools. And I have seen the intersection and the importance mental health plays in educating students. So I am all in, and I'm so glad to be here today. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Well, thank you all so much for being here. It's so nice to meet you and so nice to hear about your commitment to mental health. As you've heard me say, I'm sure, at Mental Health Colorado, our mission is to achieve healthier minds across the lifespan for all Coloradans. And the way we see it is that this means providing a strong start for all of Colorado's children, support for families, access to supports and services, to support wellness and aging, to decriminalize mental health and substance use conditions, and end the shame and discrimination that often impede our seeking of care and our ability to describe our needs. I've got a bunch of different questions. We've got a bunch of people to talk, and we don't have infinite amounts of time, so I won't get through all of these questions. I will do my very best to make sure that everybody has an opportunity and that we're balancing out time well. And I'm going to skip around to my questions and maybe even add some additional questions as we discuss things, and I'll make sure that we have, I'll balance the State Board of Education and the District Attorney questions somehow. And first of all, really just a sort of general question. You've all maybe said a sentence or so about it already, but when we talk about improving mental health or creating healthier minds across the lifespan for all Coloradans, what does that look like to you? And how do you define mental health? And whoever would, if you would just indicate an interest in speaking by raising a hand or something, I can moderate.
Well, I'll start.
Thank you.
Just, you know, I think that what we see in the criminal justice system is people who are having trouble with daily life and daily life activities. And sometimes it's severe, and sometimes it's not as severe. But I think the unfortunate thing is that families or people who interact with people who are not acting as most people act are afraid of them. And so the reaction tends to be to call the police, which I understand. But I think that we need a better way to address getting, we need a better system for people to call, if you will, to address people who are acting strangely, who are perhaps threatening. Because the police, when the police show up, there is an escalation, an automatic escalation. And I think Denver fortunately has trained its police officers in de-escalation techniques. But nevertheless, they're also trained in how to handle a violent situation. And so things can escalate. I'm very pleased that Denver has the co-responder program, where mental health professionals ride with police officers. And now we have the STAR program, which is a pilot by Denver Police, where an officer doesn't even respond. It's an EMT and a mental health worker. And that started in June and is showing very good results. So I think we need to be moving in that direction of sending professionals, as long as the situation isn't really dangerous, but professionals in treating and understanding substance abuse and mental health to those situations instead of the police or in conjunction with the police.
Thank you. I saw Mr. Durkin's hand, and then Ms. King's.
Thank you. And to build on what Ms. McCann is talking about, once someone is involved in the criminal justice system, I think we need to take that opportunity while they're involved in the criminal justice system to try to address the issues that brought them to court, should they get to court. And of course, it goes beyond just the person who's having that type of mental health episode or struggling with mental health issues, particularly if they victimize other folks. We need to effectively address both of the offender, who is suffering from a mental health or drug addiction issue, as well as bringing justice for the victims as well. So let's take that opportunity while they're in court to try to address the issues that got them there. And that's why we are proud in Jefferson County, where I'm a chief DA and have spent the last 25 years, my entire professional career, protecting our community as a DA in the Jefferson and Gilpin County DA's office, for the most part. That's why we're proud of our problem-solving courts in Jefferson and Gilpin Counties. We have a mental health court where we try to do exactly that, provide the exact supervision and the resources necessary to those who are suffering from mental health issues so that we can try to make sure that we address it today so that they don't come back tomorrow for the better of, for them, so that they heal and so that they don't create future victims in the future as well. So let's use that opportunity to the best of our ability to prevent that from happening.
Thank you. Ms. King.
So I think one thing, when we're thinking about how we really address this, is that it has to be holistic. Jefferson County certainly does have great specialty courts that focus on juvenile and adult mental health. But those are for people who have come to the attention of law enforcement, committed a crime by statute, and have also been deemed high needs to the point where they need daily, weekly intervention. That isn't always where we want our folks who are dealing with a mental health crisis to end up. And so it's imperative that we have other catchments, if you will, catchment basins before we reach the level of criminality and the level of intervention required in a specialty court. Right now, Westminster Police Department, Arvada Police Department, and Lakewood Police Department are trying different interventions. Westminster and Arvada have co-responder programs. We are not, I don't think it's as developed as what's being done in Denver. So there's opportunity there. And then Lakewood is also trying to connect folks who are low-risk, low-level to services on the street rather than sending them through the court process. And what we need and the leadership from the District Attorney's Office is really to make sure that it doesn't matter what city you're in, but if you're in Jefferson County, you're going to have this same opportunity to connect the services, do any restorative justice, and stabilize in the community. We know statistically that if we over-incarcerate low-risk, low-level folks, especially if they have co-occurring issues around addiction and mental health, that we really put them at risk of destabilizing them with medication, service access, often housing, job loss, and transportation. And in a county as big as ours, that's so spread out, those can really put people in peril. So there's room for us to grow out here and to make sure that no matter where folks are in the county, they're going to have the same opportunities and resources available before we get to the point of criminalization.
Thank you. Ms. Esser.
Thank you. It's great to hear all our candidates for District Attorney speak to mental health. My hope as an educator is that we would start much younger. Looking at the mental health of our students, both Lisa and I have experienced what it's like when you have families who suffer from generational poverty. Many, many times, it's because mental health issues have not been addressed. I've had kids who are in danger of suicide, and they're very young. And they can get some mental health care from the schools through the psychologists that many schools share. Very few schools have a psychologist for 500 students. Many elementary schools have no counselor to go with this psychologist. And what I've seen is parents take advantage of what they can from their own health insurance, what's provided. Once that's gone, it costs about $270 an hour to get these kids more care and to get them on a safe path. And we have to find a better way to take care of these kids.
Thank you. Mrs. Scarsaga.
Yeah, and just that first question you asked is, what does mental health mean to you? I was like, oh, that's got, it's a sense of well-being, right? Everybody has mental health, just like you have physical health. But most of us, we have good days, bad days. It's when it starts interrupting and interfering with your ability to function day to day that you need to, you know, seek support. And like I said, we all have our good days and bad days. But joining right with Carla, that idea of starting early and our base, we call it kind of universal care, that I believe people in COVID certainly has brought this forward, the need for students to be engaged in social, emotional learning in addition to academic learning. And last night, Denver Public Schools had a workshop, about seven or eight principals, talking about their schools and their programs. And they are models. I think what we need as educators is we have people who don't want to talk about this, but this is a part of what education is, and we need to fund it and support it. And it's the way we roll, yeah.
Any additional thoughts or responses to my opening question? I'll move on. Ms. Patton, please.
Just quickly, I mean, Lisa makes a great point, and it's imperative that we start treating mental health like physical health and that there is a range of, it's a spectrum. And so, you know, all of us have varying degrees of mental health. Some of us are very healthy, some of us are not so healthy. And we need to, I think this is probably going to wrap into the next question, de-stigmatize mental health, work on ways that people know it's okay to admit that if you're struggling, and if you need to see somebody to get some professional help. And we need to get that message out there. And if we can do that, we're ultimately going to prevent crime in our communities.
That's right, and it's a fair bet that none of our mental health is as good as it was a year ago at this time. So thank you, yeah, and leading into my next question, and that is about that shame and discrimination, or stigma, as it's been called. And it affects the way we address our mental health especially, but also our physical health. What sorts of tips and tactics do you want to suggest for ending that shame around mental health? Or what are the kinds of barriers that prevent us from talking about it and being able to acknowledge our needs? And what are pathways around those barriers? Mr. Durkin.
Well, I think this conversation is really the, not the starting point. Obviously, it's a continuation of a conversation where we need to be honest about mental health and about drug addiction, both as individuals and as a community. And I think a great example of that is just the trauma that first responders, particularly law enforcement, go through each and every day. The things that they see, the things that they smell, the things that they have to process and touch would traumatize all of us on this call to a degree that we would probably need to see counseling, and that's just one day's worth of work for them. And we see that in our victims as well, the things that they've had to experience. But what really no one talks about is how to process that, how to talk about it, how to get through those things. And so I think it begins with a conversation, awareness, honesty, and then we can get to the next step of reaching out and providing services to all those people. But I also think that there are, there's a vigorous conversation going on with collateral consequences. And right now, there's some concern of the collateral consequences one might face if they are open about mental health, the mental health issues they may be having, and the consequences that could have for them, both in an individual level, a family, but really primarily in the workforce or in the workplace, that perhaps that that could come back and harm them in some other way and basically pour gas on a fire. So I think we have to, we have to be honest, and we have to be complete in our process in terms of getting resources to those who need it.
Ms. Scarsaga, I saw your hand first.
This is kind of one of my areas of passion, is I think about normalizing. We need to normalize conversations about mental health. And we all have family, I have immediate family members that everything from addiction to bipolar to depression, anxiety. And I understand why, exactly to Matthew's point, why they don't talk about it because of the potential consequences. And again, I think this is where we go back to, especially at the younger ages, and this is being done in some areas, but we need to expand it. And that is talk about it and normalize it so that our younger kids, as they grow, we've seen it all the time. I mean, and I like my example, or one is smoking. We had to normalize not smoking is okay for our young kids. And once they pick that up, it really does help those kinds of things, starting young, so that when we're old, we'll say, my God, these kids, they can talk about it. They have this, I wish it had been like that when we were younger, so.
Mr. Mason.
I guess I agree with everything that's already been said on this, and I'll just reemphasize that I think stigma is real. I think it's really easy to talk about having a broken leg or having the flu or having some kind of physical ailment that everybody's used to and that people are used to going to the doctor about. But we're not comfortable talking about mental illness. And that stigma, I think, really impacts everyone and certainly impacts our ability to address it. And so part of our role as leaders and potential elected officials is being really open about it and talking about it. And I really agree and am passionate about this issue of mental health in the law enforcement community. As Matthew Durkin said, those of us who work in law enforcement certainly are first responders, but frankly, also attorneys, see things that can't be unseen. And I sometimes will go to homicide scenes after they occur, and some of my other colleagues do as well. And we have to be professional. We have to remember that this isn't our own family or our own personal tragedy. But you can't then just go home and take a shower and pretend it didn't happen. And what I have found in my years working at the DA's office, particularly as a supervisor, and I supervise 30 attorneys, is that attorneys in law enforcement, in DA's offices, and support staff, and paralegals, and investigators, and of course, police officers, internalize what they've seen, but don't want to talk about it because they don't want to appear to be weak. And the sense that if I talk about it, I will appear to be weak, and my career will be jeopardized, or people won't think I can handle the job, is pervasive. And that's pervasive. And that really has to be addressed by those of us who are in positions of management and authority.
Ms. McCann, and then Ms. Patton, and then Ms. King.
I'll make this brief, but one of the things that we've done in Denver in our office is start a peer support program for the very reasons that Brian was discussing. You know, our, not just the attorneys, but our staff, the secretaries who put together the discovery and so forth, they see these pictures, and they may hear some of the dialogue about what's happened. And it can have a very profound effect in terms of, you know, just being exposed to that much trauma over and over and seeing people in the worst parts of, you know, time of their life. Our victim advocates are dealing with people who are suffering terribly. And so we had six people trained in the office. We'd like to expand it, but we've been able to partner with a psychologist who works with police officers. And I think it's been very helpful just to have someone in our, people in our office that people can talk to.
Ms. Patton.
Yeah, I just want to add, stigma is also an impediment to treating individuals of mental illness once they're already in our correctional system, once they're in our prisons. And just a little more about that mental health case I mentioned at the beginning. So there was a challenge brought to So there was a challenge brought to the mental health services being provided at the federal supermax in Florence, Colorado. And that's the only federal supermax in our federal system. So I mean, it's got the worst of the worst. It's got the terrorists, the narcos, really dangerous people. But there was a lot of untreated mental illness there. And it was, one of the problems was is that they didn't have the services available. And so part of reforming the mental health system down there, we provided additional services. Like we provided a way to provide group therapy to these inmates by, you know, essentially erecting these booths that were like the size of a telephone booth. And so like five individuals could be in there safely with a therapist there safely and have group therapy. We opened three mental health units across the federal system that were designed specifically for inmates who had these very high security needs, but also had serious mental illness. But one of the biggest challenges we had is that the inmates themselves refused. They didn't want to receive mental health services because it was viewed as a sign of weakness. And when you are in a setting like that, when individuals are in a setting like that, particularly men who have a reputation of being tough all their lives, for them to even acknowledge that they might need to talk to somebody, you know, it was it was very challenging. And so what we actually did in that those cases is we screened every inmate down in the federal supermax. We had two independent outside psychiatrists come in and screen all of them and determine what their needs were and determine whether they needed to be transferred to the one of these high treatment units. And so that was a way to try to address that stigma. But it's even more pervasive, I would say, in the prison system than it is in society at large.
Thank you. Ms. Esser.
The teachers also feel the stigma of reaching out for mental health. They see the kids, we talk about the school to prison pipeline. Often, teachers are truly the first responders when young kids have these these issues of mental health and have parents that might also have the issues of mental health. I know one of my principals, she is taking a year off because two of her students committed suicide within four days of each other at the high school. That traumatizes the entire staff because they feel like they've given what services they can. And I think until we treat mental health like we treat cancer, until a personality disorder or bipolar is treated like cancer is treated, we're going to continue to see this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott, are you going to say something too? No, very good. Yeah, thank you so much. That was all good points and that those collateral issues are real for sure. And I do think it comes back to that normalizing thing. It seems to me that if, especially when somebody is in a first responder role like a teacher or a law enforcement officer or somebody working in an emergency department, it seems to me that the assumption is that you've been traumatized secondarily by the magnitude of things that you've seen in the entire practice ought to be around therapeutic support built into those interventions as a part of a debriefing and recovery process for all. And we need to turn it on its head and make it clear that if you are not traumatized by the things you've seen or experienced, then we're really going to worry about you because it would denote a certain kind of you're past a certain point of being able to perceive, feel, experience empathy, all those kinds of things. But anyway, very good things and such a good point about the prevalence of people with serious mental health needs in our correctional system. It is dramatically higher in our correction system nationwide. I had an opportunity also a couple of years ago to meet David Kozinski, who's Ted Kozinski, the Unabomber's brother, who was promoting his narrative, his book, his memoir about his brother. And his brother, the Unabomber, has cut him off because David insists that he's got this mental health history. And Ted is in total unwillingness to acknowledge any kind of a mental health aspect to his behavior. So such a good point about that persistence of stigma. So let's see, I'm going to try and divide a couple more questions across the two fields. You had the our candidates for state board had mentioned, you've mentioned the school to prison pipeline. I'm curious if you'd say a little bit more about how you perceive that phenomenon playing out in your district and what kinds of thoughts you may have about intervening in that. And this is, if you're, I'm sure everybody with us as a participant is familiar with the phenomenon. But in the advocacy world, the school to prison pipeline is based on some statistical observations about the increased likelihood of later involvement in juvenile justice and then adult justice systems for folks who've experienced harsh disciplinary practices in the course of their education early on.
Well, Vincent, you just you just described it, you said exactly that. And the data is pretty clear. The younger the student, the more often they are disciplined in like suspensions, expulsions, et cetera, that they are more likely then to to not finish school, drop out, more likely to enter criminal justice system. There is a lot of talk right now about police policing in schools. My thoughts around this, I kind of follow the ACLU model, which is they don't like officers in schools. But if you are, to the extent that you have them, the boards have policies that very explicitly state out what their role is to be. And what what's happened is instead of, you know, they're brought in for safety, but when they cross the line and when they're pushed into disciplining, for which that's really not their expertise, that's when we saw quite a bit of this increase. And some, there is, this is that part of that piece that is intersectional. Some of it is mental health, some of it is just the setup of the discipline even within the schools. It's not just one thing, but certainly it is something that I think Denver is on its way. And Jeffco's done some work, and I think they are on their way and addressing it. And then, of course, at the state board level will support what the districts are bringing forward.
Thank you. Yeah, we know with regard to Denver, we know that Padres y Jovenes Unidos is a group that has been working at that intersection. And they've been keeping a report card for the last several years. And you've seen Denver make significant progress on that front. Ms. Esser, sorry, excuse.
Thank you. That's good. I, Lisa explained very clearly what what the role of a security officer should be inside of a school or a resource officer. They don't know, the resource officers rarely know the mental health issues of the students. That belongs in the school's hands, particularly because of HIPAA, and it belongs in the psychologist's hands and the counselor's hands when we have that. Many times, kids are disciplined for acting out when when it truly is a mental health issue. I can name the kids, I can name the situations, and they do act out. Occasionally, it is a harm to themselves or to others, and something has to be done. That's where it would be far more reasonable that mental health workers work with these kids than to have them be put into the criminal justice system for expressing their illness. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durkin, and then Ms. King.
Well, first and foremost, we need to make sure that our schools are safe. And so there is a tremendous value in school resource officers to maintain that safety of the school community as a whole, but also the safety of individual students as well. And so I am proud to have the support of our Director of Public Safety or Director of Safety for Jefferson County Public Schools because student resource officers are a member of that community. It's not necessarily a one hat or one role that they play or that they wear. It's a, they are a member of that school community. So they are the first people to really see what's going on on the local level down there in the schools to understand what's happening with the community, but also with individual students. But what we're particularly proud of in Jefferson County is just the collaboration that we have between the schools and our office to identify high-risk students before something happens so that we can provide interventions in advance of anything criminal happening or that if something criminal has happened, that we can respond immediately with the resources and the services that are necessary, once again, to try to get that student out of that that situation that they're in so that they can get on a path to a better, happier place for them and for the safety of the entire community. So it's a tremendous collaboration between the District Attorney's Office and Jefferson County Public Schools that we are very, very proud of, that we would want to continue and want to encourage others to model as well.
Thank you. Ms. King.
Thank you so much. You know, as someone who focused on juvenile issues for five years as a prosecutor, I think that we really have to be asking ourselves our role in creating community safety. And I think each community is going to have to decide how they want law enforcement in their schools. But ultimately, it should not be in a disciplinary manner. I want SROs who can respond to allegations of sex assault, who bring that level of expertise to the school and who can facilitate investigations into true criminal behavior that we ultimately need to prosecute and to address that harm. But disciplinary matters are not with the SRO. And we should also be discussing as a community, at what age are we risking criminalizing children? Right now, 10, 11, and 12-year-olds can be prosecuted in a juvenile adjudication. If, when we talk about then later risk assessments for adults, one of the first questions that's going to be asked is what was the first age of arrest? If it's a 10, 11, and 12-year-old, that's a very high risk factor. Now, is a 10, 11, and 12-year-old belonging in our courthouse? And I think the answer generally is no, absolutely not. We need to revisit the age of criminality here in Colorado. And in the time between revisiting that, I think we should be diverting 10, 11, and 12-year-olds as much as possible, even those 13 and 14-year-olds. Because we need to treat what's happening for these young people as often the public health issue that it is and the community issue that it is and not through the criminal justice system.
Thank you. Anybody else? More question about that? Yeah, one of the things that struck me during the recent work of the Governor's Behavioral Health Task Force, the Children's Subcommittee came forward with its set of recommendations. And the way they prefaced their recommendations was first by defining childhood as something that extended to 26, based on the new understanding that brains are not fully formed. The prefrontal cortex is not fully formed until that age. And my immediate question was, well, what does that do for our prosecution of juveniles as adults? Wouldn't the same logic then apply to that, that these folks do not have fully formed brains? But we don't have to answer that question or get into it today. My next question for you, and we'll have time for this one. And then maybe we'll look and see if participants have submitted any questions. So, and this is for both candidates for State Board of Education as well as for the DA's. And it's sort of about beyond your immediate scope of work. What in your community are the, what are the most prevalent barriers to greater mental health in your community as you see it? Or if you had, if we had lots of resources and the ability to make dramatic, significant change in our communities, what are the kinds of things that might be done to increase mental health? And for the DA's, head them off at the pass so that you never see them. And for the folks in education, dramatically diminish the behavioral health challenges, the disruption, and also increase academic performance and student success. Ms. Patton.
I think a really important way that we can keep individuals with mental health out of our prison system is through diversion programs. And so I've actually set up and run a diversion program in another district. And diversion programs, you know, most of them are post-filing. Ours was not post-plea, so the individual did not have to plead guilty in order to enter into diversion. They did have to accept responsibility for their actions. But so we take individuals who were mainly first-time offenders, non-vital offenses. We wouldn't take anybody with murder, sex assault, nothing like that. But we try to, we screen them to first determine whether they're appropriate and B, see what services they need in order to rehabilitate. What do they need to turn their lives around? And very often, they needed mental health treatments. And very often, they weren't already getting it. They might also need substance abuse treatment. They may need, you know, help with their job situation and whatnot. And I have a unique perspective on this because when I set up the program in this other district where I worked, it was a very small district, and we didn't have a caseworker hired by the time the program was ready to launch. So I worked as the caseworker. And so I actually interviewed the clients myself to determine whether or not they were appropriate diversion. And in the vast majority of the cases, there was significant underlying trauma in that individual's life. They may have been sexually abused, physically abused, emotionally abused as a child. Maybe they, you know, lost someone close to them to violence or to suicide. And, you know, until we get better at identifying that trauma and figuring out how to treat the mental illness that results of it, we're not going to do a good job at preventing crime. And so we need more services like diversion because the other great thing about diversion is that the recidivism rates are incredibly low because we give individuals the resources they need to get back on the right track, to move forward. And recidivism rates in these programs are typically about 10 to 15%, whereas sending someone to prison to our Department of Corrections, those recidivism rates are sometimes as high as 50% because we're, again, we're not able to give that type of treatment within our prison system. And we're also not giving individuals the resources they need to re-enter society once they paid their debt to society.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Vincent, I think it's really appropriate that you have this panel with both DA candidates and State Board of Education candidates on here because I think the question that you're asking really has an overlap between our two roles. If I could wave some kind of magic wand and have all kinds of resources to throw at mental health, I'd send it to the schools. I think that if we can address mental health problems at an earlier age, that will keep people out of the criminal justice system. And it also goes hand in hand with the previous conversation about ending the school to prison pipeline. If we can truly, truly make it such that kids in schools know that adults care not just about their physical health, but about their mental health and that they can articulate things like, you know, my brain doesn't feel good today or I just have a really a lot of heavy thoughts today, which every now and then one of my kids will say to me. And I'm always so proud when I hear them articulate that because it means that they understand that that also is something that they should be able to say and talk about. And if we could, if we really could invest real significant resources in our schools and in young people, that would have a dramatic impact on the criminal justice system, without the criminal justice system even needing to be involved. And I'll say one other thing. This overlap between our two respective roles, I think, can also be formalized more. I would like to see more interaction and collaboration and partnership between my DA's office and the school districts in our jurisdiction because I think mental health in particular and the school to prison pipeline issue are ways where we need to just be communicating more and collaborating and working together. It's not a problem that one sector of society, education or criminal justice, can handle alone.
Mrs. Scarsaga, and then Ms. McCann.
So real quickly, so if I could wave my magic wand, I would, I would make mental health screening, universal screening, a part of everything we do. And we would, you know, you go to the, you go to the doctor, you get your annual physical, kids have to have. And we would, you know, you go to the, you go to the doctor, you get your annual physical, kids have to have it. They get their shots, they also then, but we can do this onsite too, you don't have to go offsite. But, and they have a mental health screening, that's at least annually. Then you have your kind of like level two, you have enough pretty people inside the school that when trauma does occur, that they can be referred. And I do think that there are some things that a school is not going to be able to handle, right? We don't have psychiatrists, we don't have medications, we have, there's a limit. And my ideal would be that there is that continuation of service that anybody who needs the next step up, I don't have to fish and find and insurance and all this. I can just, here's where you go, here's the transportation to it. And it's just, it's the circular piece that's uninterrupted. That, that is my dream. And again, kind of back to normalizing. I don't think schools can handle it all, but certainly we can do more, in particular at the universal level, so that's it.
Thank you. Ms. McCann.
Yes, so just again briefly, I, I do think that having a resource that parents or others can call when there is a mental health incident going on instead of the police, where they would get a 24/7 response would be a really important thing. It would be very expensive, but you know, police are 24/7, so that's who people call. And it would be nice to have another, the ability to get a 24/7 sort of mental health, not just, I know there are crisis hotlines, but to actually have someone be able to respond and figure out whether that person needs to be hospitalized or whether they can refer them for further treatment to a, to a doctor or to a facility. But of course, insurance is also a very big piece of this. We have to have insurance companies paying for mental health treatment, they're supposed to. But I don't know that they all do.
Thank you. Ms. King.
One agency that I also think is in need of more funding is Human Services, especially for kids. If it's, if it's an issue that's going to rise beyond what can be done in the schools, Human Services is often the, the first responders for a family and going into the house and offering services on the ground. And they are always in need of more funding from just the individual officers, the number of resources they have to utilize, the number of therapists that can work with a family in home. And then ultimately, the facilities that they, that they have are, would all benefit from greater resources. And again, that's another stopgap before folks hit the criminal justice system.
Yeah, thank you for sharing those thoughts. One of the things that Mental Health Colorado has been doing through our Equitas project, work on disentangling mental health criminal justice, is working with the prosecutors research network and prosecutors offices around the country that have various kinds of diversion programs in place so that they can share what they've learned with one another and arrive at some understandings about what kinds of measures to be tracking and things like that. And we held a summit of that group about two months ago. And my takeaway at the end of it was, we've got all of these prosecutors speaking in the public health language of social determinants and talking about how important it is to invest in education and human services. And I thought, well, this is a great sign of optimism in our community. Because people in education or mental health advocates, we can talk about investing in children and education until we're blue in the face and people are tired of hearing it from us. But when we have our DAs and prosecutors coming out with strong articulate arguments like that in their own communities, that really lends a lot of advocacy punch to the message, I think. So thank you for those thoughts. We just have a very few minutes left here. The other thing, and we've got a question or two that I'll share with you from folks listening to us this afternoon. Another thing I wanted to mention with regard to that call for help, Ms. McCann was mentioning early on, how folks can, some families will find themselves afraid of the family member due to their unmanaged mental health and call 911, because that's what we're trained to do in times of distress. ColoradoCrisisServices.org is an alternative and an option, even if it's not a crisis. It is a potential avenue for that kind of needs assessment and consultation 24/7 about, hmm, does this person need hospitalization or some kind of acute intervention? Or is this something that is more manageable through just, you know, a therapy appointment or something like that that could be set up for the next day? So we're always encouraging people to use Colorado Crisis Services. We, but don't, haven't necessarily heard a whole lot back about how effective that is as an intervention. The other thing to note is that the FCC has recently approved a new 988 number, which won't be instated for some time yet, because all kinds of technical things need to be cleared out of the way for it to function across the country. But the idea is that 988 will supplement or complement 911, but be specifically for suicide prevention and other kinds of mental health needs. And so that should help segregate those distress calls a little bit more effectively. I also just want to mention that one of the initiatives that we're, we're supporting and promoting is this notion that what we need is care, not cuffs. And that when families are calling for help, they need to be very explicit in their call for help and tell the dispatcher, I'm calling for care, not cuffs. I need clinical intervention, this is a family member with a health issue. And just to drive as much, promote as much clarity of understanding about what first responders are asked to respond to ahead of time. But then across that whole spectrum of things, promoting care, not cuffs, as what we want in our schools. Cuffs used to be those things that parents dished out to their naughty children that we don't approve of so much anymore in our stepping back from corporal punishment. We don't dish out cuffs to our children. We shouldn't be dishing out cuffs to folks who really just need mental health care. And that's across the board. So question, let's see, one of the questions from a gentleman listening in with us today is for district attorney candidates. And that is, as district attorney, would you support legislation to decriminalize mental health offenses during the onset of an individual mental health crisis and remove an individual's arrest record?
I'll take a stab.
Thank you.
That's a little bit hard to answer because, you know, how, how do you know it's the beginning stages of mental health crisis or mental health situation? I think you'd have to look at the individual circumstances. So I don't think I'd be in favor of a blanket kind of legislation that said something along those lines. I just don't think you would. I'm not sure how that could be implemented. But I, I would be in favor of more resources and the kind of thing you were talking about, Vincent, of providing another option for people who have mental health issues. Because I, I think that, well, we've talked about, about why. But I, the legislation would have to be, I just don't know how you would put that into a legislative piece.
Thank you. Mr. Durkin.
Thank you, and I agree with Ms. McCann. I, I don't, I don't see how that would look legislatively, so at this point I would disagree. I'd also add that through effective representation, and our defendants here in Colorado get the best representation that is available in the country. I'm confident of that. Through motions to declare or someone competent or incompetent, and then certainly motions to address the insanity or impaired mental condition of a certain defendant. And I think that these issues are, are very well litigated in the criminal justice system. And so at this point, I think that the system is, although can be improved, and I think we've passed legislation within the last couple of years to improve those competency evaluations to make sure they're being done effectively and efficiently. I think at this point, those issues are being very effectively litigated in the individual cases.
Thank you. Ms. King.
I think that when we talk about destigmatization, you know, we have to decide. I don't think we can do it legislatively, so I think the last two answers are correct. But are we going to see mental illness as a mitigator? Or is it an aggravator? And I think that that is the cultural shift that this group is talking about. Is that, you know, it is often a mitigator for the person who is coming before the court, having been charged with a crime. Prosecutors are charged with addressing harm in the community. And so then the next question becomes, how do we effectively address it? And if we don't have diversion options, if we, you know, don't have enough specialty court options or whatever, then we're probably not effectively addressing the harm. So I think in that destigmatization and cultural shift, we need to see mental illness as a mitigator. And I, I, it's interesting to think about competency and sanity in the same way. You know, there's a lot of folks who are mentally ill in the system where competency and sanity are not the issue. And so it's really up to the leadership in law enforcement to acknowledge mental illness as a mitigator and as a public health concern, as one of the factors that we account for when we evaluate a case.
Thank you. So we're rapidly, we've reached the end of our time. And I know everybody's super busy and thank you so much for joining us and modeling civil discourse in an age where it sometimes seems impossible. That's not been the case at all in any of these Colorado forums that we posted, which is another great source of a mental health and optimism for us. We are, as you know, working to make sure mental health is a priority for all voters and for every candidate on every ballot. And thank you so much for, these candidates for joining us today. If you're listening today, we hope you'll consider donating to support our advocacy work by going to mentalhealthcolorado.org/donate. And if you are inspired by some of the things you heard today and want to become an advocate for mental health, please consider joining our Brainwave, which is our statewide network of grassroots advocates, which include people with lived experience of mental health needs, as well as providers of care, people who work in the criminal justice system, the education system, and have important and compelling stories to tell that we can mobilize to assist in our policy work. So you can find out more about the Brainwave at our website. Thank you again for joining us. We wish you all well and feel great optimism at finding the leadership of your respective offices in capable hands.
Thank you so much, Vincent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent. Have a great day.
You're welcome.
Day well.